All right. Our next item is the results of the calendar discussion and next steps. I believe what's going to happen next is that Mary and Dr. Richardson are going to give us a review of the meetings that many of us attended. And there'll be an opportunity to ask questions. And then I think we can roll up our sleeves and have a discussion. One of the things while they're setting up, I wanted to have board members consider is, I know it's hard when we have a discussion sometimes when we re-follow Robert's Rules of Order. And you address me, and I try to keep track so that someone doesn't get to talk repeatedly before another person. If a board member wanted to suspend rules on important orders such as, I would like to be able, as a board member, to have a dialogue and respond even though I've already talked once. We could, a board member could ask that that be done, and we would have to, if there was no objections, we could go forward, or we would have to vote in a two-thirds majority. I would say, as a chair, if there's objection, we should stick with the rules that we have as a practice. But I know that we want to kind of roll up our sleeves and have a dialogue. So I was just going to mention that that is something that board members could consider. But what I would like to do is first have Mary and Dr. Richardson give us a review and have us have an opportunity to ask questions.
And I'm going to let Mary start this because hopefully that way what's left of my voice will go for the other part. But again, the process that has been laid out here in terms of the conversations, Mary has done a masterful job in terms of providing with facilitation for those pieces. She's one of the most organized and detailed persons that I've ever been able to work with, which has been great. And what we want to do is kind of just walk you through the pieces that have been done to this point. We also want to share with you the results that are in your packet of the update on the straw poll results where we had an additional about 475 people that got a chance to respond on each of the seven calendars and give us some feedback as to what they thought. And then, as Evan said, what we want to do is open it up for you to really have the discussion about, and what's next. So, Mary, if you'll get us started, I'll try to be the closer.
Okay.
On my part, anyway.
All righty. Well, good evening, and thank you for your time. I would like to provide a brief review of the three community calendar conversations held during March and April. And all three of these meetings were held here in the upper cafeteria at the high school. The results of the work completed at these meetings, the informational PowerPoints, and the comments are all available on our website and for the public, as well as being part of your board packet for this evening. Well, that's
It's what it is.
Interesting. So, the first meeting was held on March 7th, and we had 41 people who signed in for this meeting. And what is up here is the brief agenda. That's, a couple of lines are superimposed. The introductory remarks included information that this was indeed a community conversation about the calendar and not a decision-making task force. We were asked by the school board to facilitate these conversations. And the purpose was to provide some common background information on the development of school calendars and to solicit community input. The people who attended the three meetings were interested people who gave of their time to participate. And we truly appreciate their time, their input, their ideas, and interest in this community conversation. But it is important to note that the attendees were not a representative group of all the stakeholders in our school district, but rather people who chose to be there. Invitations and notifications were sent through Sky Alert, publicized in the newspaper, and on the website. Ah, a little clearer. After the introductory remarks, Dr. Richardson presented information on the history and worldview of school calendars titled, and I'm going to read this so I get it correct, "Comparing calendars and schedules: organizing the school year and school day around the world and in the United States." And then we got to work on the assignment for the evening. "Brainstorm key components of a quality calendar that reflect what is best for student learning." People worked in small table groups to compile this list. When all the groups were finished, we shared these lists with the entire whole group. At the end of the evening, we had a list of 111 key components. And again, these are available in unedited form on the website. Our second meeting was held on April 2nd. We had 31 people who signed in. Griff Wigley started by providing an update of the website and the first straw poll results. Dr. Richardson presented information on time and learning, state statutes, contractual parameters, and research on the impact of calendars on student learning. Our work for that evening was to take the 111 key components generated at the previous meeting and place them into one of nine categories. And the nine categories are listed right here. When the category listing was complete, the participants were given time to do a gallery walk. They could review each list, ask questions for any clarification about anything that was on the list. When they felt ready, they each received 10 colored dots to place on the specific items that they felt were the most important or their own priorities. Participants could place their dots however they wished. Some put all 10 dots on one item, while others placed one dot on 10 different items or any combination that they so chose. The dot activity was not done to declare a winner or winners in the categories, but rather to help make some determinations as to priorities to keep in mind when developing a school calendar. The third meeting was held on April 30th. We had 46 people sign in. Griff Wigley again provided a brief update on the website, and Dr. Richardson presented a summary of the previous two informational items since each meeting had new people in The small group work for the evening consisted of creating benefit and concern charts for each of the seven skeleton calendars. And the seven calendars were named traditional, traditional with shorter breaks, traditional with longer breaks, aligned breaks, 45-15, more school days with the same length of day, more school days with a shorter length of day. After the benefits and concerns charts were reviewed and discussed by the whole group, with additions provided by anyone in the large group, we took a show-of-hands vote on each calendar. The question asked for each calendar was, "Does this calendar type have enough merit to move it forward for more consideration and fleshing out with specific detail and actual days?" The participants were asked to vote yes or no on each calendar type. The results of this show-of-hands vote is depicted right here. And just as a note, the participants were allowed to abstain, so that's why the vote totals are not the same for each calendar type. Again, all of this information in more detail is posted on the website, and if you go to the Northfield Public Schools website, there is a link directly to this. Does anyone have any questions or comments for me? Any questions, board members, from Mary?
And this should feel like deja vu all over again.
Yes, I think most of us
Because you all lived through this firsthand, but I think it was important, again, to kind of lay out, there was a process that we used. And really, the process was really creating the broadest top of the funnel and then beginning to funnel down in terms of taking all of the detail, all of the concepts that people had, beginning to think about what were the priority concepts from those list of 111, and then really thinking about how would those elements be tied to one or more of the different types of calendars. And again, we tried to be very broad. We weren't trying to really explain, you know, it's going to start on September 3rd or September 5th and end on June 12th or June 1st or May 25th. But it was to at least kind of get the feel of the differences that were involved in each of the calendars. The other thing that we've done since we finished the activity is Griff worked with us to put together an additional straw poll because we wanted to get feedback from additional folks who had not been at the meeting. Because again, with the number of folks that were at the meeting, not all of those individuals actually ended up voting, as you can see, because the numbers were about 34 to 35 typically per calendar type. And so what Griff was able to do for us is using Survey Monkey and using our blog and website was to be able to put those calendars out for people to take a look at. And obviously, in a very short amount of time, we generated about 475 responses, which I think is excellent in terms of getting a broader view from more members with the community in terms of the different calendars. What you will notice overall, and if you look at the data with the small group, the data with this larger group of folks, again, remembering that this is a straw poll, so this is not a randomized survey where we're actually able to get data looking at all different groups, is that the two straw polls and the data from the actual activity in the third meeting match up pretty closely. You'll notice that the calendar number one, in terms of the materials you have, is the one that got the most positive votes in terms of believing it should be fleshed out with more detail and specifics, with about 87% of the people indicating they wanted to see that happen, only about 12% saying no. In comparison with the traditional calendar with shorter breaks, the idea being you would start after Labor Day but end earlier on, probably in late May, then we come down to about 53% being interested in seeing that calendar move forward and have more discussion, and about 46% saying that they didn't want it to go forward. Then looking at the traditional with longer breaks and all of the other calendars, now we begin to see fewer people in the yes category with, again, about 31% versus 70% looking at a traditional with longer breaks, about 32% and 68% looking at the line breaks, again, with only about 32% indicating a desire to move forward and look more at that calendar. The 45-15, being an even smaller amount with only about 25% of the folks being interested in moving forward with looking at that calendar further at this time, and about 75, 76% saying they were not interested. And then the two calendars that were the extended number of days, probably having the least interest, with only about 17% interested in a more school day calendar, with only about 17% compared to 82% against, and about 14% for and about 85% against more school days with shorter days. The rest of the document then, Griff said, you know, it would be interesting to see who the people were that responded, and especially so that it would be very clear that these responses were not from individuals who already were at the meeting and had a chance to do their straw poll selections as part of that. He did get about 360 out of the 460 folks who were willing to put their name down in terms of the document. You'll see all of those names listed on the next three pages. And then finally, the last several pages were an opportunity for people to make some comments about the options. And again, there's a wide variety. I'd like to give you a couple minutes. If you haven't done so, take a look through just the comments because they go all the way from simply, "Thank you for giving us the opportunity," to, you know, "We've really already told you we're not interested in looking at another calendar," to, "Gee, we'd really like a 45-15 calendar." So you have all the different range of comments that you might expect when you give an individual an opportunity to do an open comment about the calendars that are there. I think at this point, I think from my perspective and Mary's perspective, hopefully we've provided you with a lot of information about what the calendar options are, as far as we can see them. We've really tried to educate the individuals that came to the meetings and anybody else that was reading the blog and the website about what the calendar issues were, a little bit about the history of calendars around the world and in the United States, and also the research, which is not a huge amount of research, but some key research around time on past, key research around looking at the impact of summer slide. That is probably the most substantial research that we have about the impact of what happens when you have too many days in the summer or you have a shorter calendar. And I think at this point, people have responded to you based on that information and on all the other information, and basically have given you their thoughts in terms of what they think needs to happen next, if anything. And so what I think is very appropriate now is for an opportunity for the board to actually have that discussion about, what do you think about what you've seen? And what direction do you want to give Mary and I and other administrators in terms of moving forward with the potential for calendars? Not again for 13, 14, because that decision has already been made, but for looking forward into the future, 14, 15, and beyond, as to which calendars, if any, you want to have a sixth or further. Okay?
Thank you, Doctor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
So, board members, we have a lot of information in front of us, and most of us, I think, we're at most of the meetings. So we'd open it up for discussion. And I think one thing to keep in mind is, I think it would be helpful when we get to the close of our discussion to, we don't have an item for individual action, and we can certainly have a directive that does that. I think we do need to think about wherever the discussion ends up, that we have some sort of closure for that discussion that's very clear. So whatever that, wherever that takes us.
Well, I guess I'd say that I have a hard time seeing a conclusion beyond what we should do for 2014, 2015. Develop a traditional, send this off to the meeting confessor committee to come back with a traditional calendar for 2014 and 2015. And to the extent that there's a stomach to continue discussing this, it could be done in the election next year, and candidates could run for and against, and we could see what the electorate wants to do, if there really is an appetite to do something different. But clearly, the majority of the people who voted and made their voices heard, made their voices heard one way.
Well, I'm kind of torn because it's pretty clear from the people who turned up for the meetings that the support is for the traditional calendar, and there's not much support for anything else. And there were basically three traditional calendars, and it seems to me that if you're, what you're going to end up with is the traditional calendar or some slight modification of it, there's no point in going forward. I do give a lot of weight to the letter we got from Beth Barry and talking to several teachers at Greenville, which has a much larger percentage of disadvantaged students who are, and so these teachers are seeing the effects of the summer slide, and it's pretty dramatic. And they're in favor of doing something with the calendar that would address that. So I think that if we're going to move forward, we have to say, we have to make a bold move and say, what we want to do is address how the calendar could address summer slide and the achievement gap, and have that discussion. And only deal with calendars that are going to actually extend the school year to deal with summer slide. But if we, if we're not ready to make that kind of a commitment to do something radical, I think really there's no point in going forward. And I think there would be, there would be some support for doing that, but clearly from these results, there's not a lot of support. I think it's kind, it would be a worthwhile discussion. I'm worried if, I really don't know how I would come out at the end of it. I mean, because I do want to address summer slide, I do want to address the achievement gap especially. But I have not decided how much the calendar can really affect that. So I think it would be worth figuring that out. And, but on the other hand, I'm not afraid of putting a lot of work into something and then at the end saying, it didn't work out, let's just stick with what we have. I mean, I think the discussion in itself is valuable. So, you know, I could go at one extreme, do nothing, the other extreme, keep moving forward with the unpopular option.
I have some comments. I thought a lot about the summer slide and, you know, the balanced calendar, which I personally am in favor of, spreading things out, having longer breaks during the school year, smaller summer break. And I think part of the reason why I've come to that preference is, well, a lot of issues. Our technology is growing very quickly. It changes how we're teaching, how we're learning, how we're presenting, you know, our subjects. And we're no longer an agrarian calendar kind of population. We are, yes, we certainly have farms, but farms are much different from how they were even 15 years ago of how they run. And so having that sort of farm calendar, I think, is outdated. I also think that we have many more, well, we have more diversity in our community, so we have to think about the needs of all of the tiers and not necessarily the traditional, you know, I need three whole months of summer off with my kids to go to the pool. These things, I really think that we need to keep considering spreading the calendar out and not having such a long break over the summer. That's where I keep falling down, everything I've got.
And I guess the issue, you know, there are a couple of issues. First is the legislature still says we can't start before Labor Day. And until the law changes, it's difficult for us to do anything different than that.
But there is a waiver process that 59 districts in the state currently use to start before Labor Day.
And it is something that has come up every year that I've been on the board so far, but we've never gone that far yet. And it also seems to me that the waiver process as it exists is something that is not entirely workable if we have to adopt that calendar within a few months of the time that it's approved. And I think that that's something the community would necessarily support, and I don't think that's true. And I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that, but it seems to me, as long as those are the parameters that we have to work under, it still seems to me that the better process for us is to say, okay, we've had this discussion, we've gone through this process here. We can have the discussion again in the election and see what the majority of the electorate wants to do with the three seats that will be open next year, and people can articulate their positions. Because it hasn't been an election issue in years past, even though we brought it up and discussed it on the board, it's never been discussed as part of the election process. And if we're going to say that stakeholders weren't represented and people weren't involved, then let's give them a chance to be involved, and that's what the election is for.
No, go ahead.
Back in 1980, one of the planks on my platform was year-round school. I got elected anyhow. I support the things Ann has said. I really think it's, there's a lot of good reason to have shorter breaks, more school during the summer, probably not have any educational activity of the traditional sense in August. I mean, we've heard that pretty clear. And yet, through all of this, I look at it and I say, it seems to me that we could tweak the existing calendar to some extent for the good reasons. We might be able to provide some sort of a summer school program for the right reasons. And I would think that we could probably accommodate education and the community needs with some internal work on the calendar without a major renovation of the whole thing. I'm not so sure there's a conclusion there yet, but I support what Ann had said and what I spoke. No. It's a tough issue. It's a really tough issue. And one of them, I look at it, I went home that night after the third meeting, I'd say, wait a minute, are we going to change the calendar for the 49 people that came to the meeting? I don't think we generally do business that way. We do it based not on what comes in from the community as much as what sometimes community says and what is good education and good judgment. And there's a lot of gray area between those two on this issue.
Well, I'll just throw a monkey wrench into everything. You know, I've been stewing about this a lot. I really feel a little bit responsible for creating all of this work for Chris and Mary and Matt and everyone. And I do really want to thank you for the work. It took a lot to put together this community conversation, and, you know, Griff, for your part, in trying to find creative ways to involve people. And I'm very grateful to the people who showed up. But it's also clear that we did not have a cross-section that showed up. Everybody says they want to do what is best for kids, and I think, you know, Mary made heroic efforts to try to keep everyone very focused on what kind of calendar would best support improved student learning. And the first meeting, I thought, was really good at articulating those ideas. And as we went on and got more specific about calendars, it was very clear to me that there's a very strong group and very well-organized group and a passionate group, and I applaud their passion and their determination at expressing it. A very strong group that really wants to preserve at least August and, you know, some kind of very traditional summer. So I've just been, you know, cogitating on this and thinking about, you know, why do I care so much about this? And what exactly are the quality components that matter so much to me? And it kind of comes down to two things. I want all of our students to learn more, and I want them to retain more. Because the more they retain, the less time is wasted when you get back for the next year. So there's that piece. I want them to learn more, and I want it to stick. And I want to maximize opportunities for differentiation so that our highest kids are soaring and everyone else is lifted up. And I think having a different kind of calendar will help accomplish that. I'm not interested in, and I know this may be what it comes down to, but I am not interested in a two-tier system where we say, if at the end of the year you've met standards, we don't care to see you until the next fall, where we'll take care of your summer slide and then we'll move you along. And then we'll just have summer school for the kids who are really struggling. I think that really does a disservice to all the other kids in the district. I mean, the vast majority of our students experience a large degree of summer slide. You know, we've seen, we know that the high achievers do not experience much in the reading. Everybody experiences in math, everybody experiences it to some degree across the curriculum. So then, and now I've expanded way beyond the calendar here, but what I'm thinking about looking at is a task force maybe that looks at, what if we went back to leveled elementary schools? You'd have all of one grade level, you know, we had this in years past, and for a variety of reasons, went to a different system with the three elementary schools. But if you went back to leveled elementary schools, and then you could really maximize your differentiation opportunity. But if you went back to leveled elementary schools, and then you could really maximize your differentiation opportunities. And now is where the can of worms really gets wormy. What if you ran a pilot program, a side-by-side pilot, and let families select if they wanted to do an alternative calendar? And I know, you know, administration's just going, oh, my God. But, you know, you could have teachers self-selected, wanted to teach in an alternative calendar. You could have families, because we do have families who've said, I would love this. It would help so much with childcare. I know it would be good for my kids. And you could run them side-by-side. And I think it would take a long time for, you know, whatever working group put together the plan to implement this. It would be a year or two before we could actually roll it out. I think you'd have to be very, very thoughtful about how you developed resources for those, the different kinds of breaks that you would have. You know, you could still start after Labor Day. You could go till the end of June. You could have a little extra scoop that was optional, that was like a summer plus, that people could opt in if they wanted to, you know, for a week or two in July and August. You know, and again, I know there's a million moving parts here. And I know this would cost money because part of the reason we went to neighborhood schools was for busing costs. But I think it would be interesting to find out just exactly how much it would cost. I think it would provide an opportunity for the folks who are really passionate about having that long, long summer break. They could choose that. I mean, you'd let people vote with their feet. They could choose what they wanted for their kids. It'd be almost like having a charter in the midst of our traditional school. It would not impact the charter schools. I know some of the people who are here worried about St. Dominique's and the charter schools because they rely on our busing. And although that really is not our responsibility, I think we need to recognize that that has an impact. And I think, you know, it gives them the opportunity to maintain a traditional calendar or to move to an alternative calendar if they would like. But if, and then we could just implement it at the elementary level also. Because I think a lot of the concerns that people expressed with the difference in the summer, traditional summer schedule, were things that mostly impacted secondary students, you know, the summer jobs and that kind of thing. You know, if we did something like this, I think we'd have to be very thoughtful about how long we'd run the pilot program, what kind of data we would collect, you know, what the benchmarks would be for how well it was working. You know, again, it would have to be very, very well-developed before we rolled it out so that families knew what they were signing on for. And then I think most critically, the working group that implemented this, and again, I think this is a two-part thing. I think you move to leveled elementary schools and you do the alternative calendar year pilots as a piece. You do them both together. But the working group that would put together the plan for that, I think, would have to be a very, very thoughtfully composed cross-section of all the different stakeholders so that you really, excuse me, had input into the kinds of resources that would be important for the different types of breaks that would be associated with that kind of calendar. You know, that's, I'd just like to throw that out for people to think about. It's, that's not a simple thing, and it might be one of those conversations that we'd have, and we've put a lot of time and effort into it, and then we find out, oh, my goodness, it's too expensive, it's just not workable. But there might be some really valuable things that are workable that would come from it and maybe would lead to at least a more thoughtful election year cycle if we were going to ask people to vote on candidates based on what kind of calendar they supported. So that's my idea for the conversation.
Well, are you ready, Julie?
I'm ready, Julie. I'm not sure how I can segue or carry just that. I mean, I guess I took a step back even further because to me, tonight's conversation needed to be about the concerted effort we made to go to our community and have them tell us what they thought about this issue. And to me, tonight's discussion should be, what did we learn from them about how they felt and how we react to that? I think if we as a board wanted to discuss the merits of different calendars and move forward, then we should have done that on our own. And we went to the community, and as wide as we continued to cast the net, we kept getting the same response. From January until now, they have said, we liked the traditional calendar. The majority of our community said that. And I think we, I'm very proud of the fact that we're a progressive school district. We're out in front with PLCs and iPad technology and response to intervention. But I think that this is blazing a trail that I don't think our community wants us to do. And I just don't feel that the community has, is in a position right now to accept a dramatic calendar because I absolutely agree with Rob and Carrie and those who have mentioned that we can tweak a somewhat traditional calendar, but if we're really going to get at things like student achievement and the achievement gap, we have to look at very dramatic departures from a traditional calendar. And I just didn't hear that our community was ready to do that. And my perception of what we were doing, or my understanding of community conversation, was to really bring in the community. And so to me, tonight really has to be about, what did we learn from the community and how are we going to respond to that?
So I can blend the two of your, hopefully, what you were saying. So I was thinking a lot about what we've learned. And one of the things that I really learned is that there's a lack of awareness of what student achievement is. That there's a lack of awareness that we have an achievement gap. There's a lack of awareness that all our kids are sliding in the summer, you know, some of them way more than others. But I know I've, every summer home, I get my kids to do math for 12 weeks, you know, it's hard. So.
It's harder than you remember.
So I think, I think we've learned a lot, too. I guess I, one concern I have with, I think we clearly heard that the traditional calendar is what we heard from these community conversations. And we also heard, don't fix what isn't broken, even though I think we all have a different perception of things. So I'm a little concerned that each small decision we make is asking administration and educators to fix things and to make things better with one arm behind their back. But I don't know what the consequences of each of these little decisions is. So I was kind of going back and forth with, we heard, clearly heard from the community that that sort of radical change was too much. But we also clearly heard that there isn't an understanding for some of the things that we're going to be judged on. And so I guess I was being, you know, listening to Carrie talking about it. I don't, I don't have thoughts as, you know, like what you were thinking about with the dual pilot and a leveled elementary. But I wondered if we wanted to think about, we know that the strive is going to be happening and that Healthy Community Initiative is going to be leading some efforts. And we don't have to wait. We could have some sort of broader holistic working group looking at some of these things. And the calendar could be one of them. It could be some of the ideas that you're saying, Carrie. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I would think that we'd want to have some experts looking at things. And I would think it would have to be a longer, much longer process, too. But I guess I'm concerned about always shutting the door and all of the tools and then wonder, how can we do anything? So, I mean, I think clearly we can't say we're going to go forward with a 45-15 calendar for 14-15. I think that message is pretty loud and clear. And I think as much as we like to think that something radical could help all our students, I think it's going to be hard if, as a board, we wanted to do that. But I really am worried about the lack of awareness in the community for some of the challenges and the lack of awareness for the students in poverty that Rob was mentioning. I guess what keeps me awake at night is thinking about, you know, my two kids are getting this world-class education and all the wonderful things that they have. And I don't want it to be on the back of the students that are in poverty either. And I'm worried that all our little decisions are ending up there, you know, because we support lots of wonderful programs. So I don't know. I mean, this is really hard as a board where we go with this. But I guess, you know, I'm hearing what both Julie and Carrie are saying, you know. We clearly heard where the community was and what we can learn from that. And now we need as a board to decide what does that mean for our next steps. Rob?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Okay, yeah, great.
I'm just wondering about, since the first two things that hit me in the face when I got on the board were calendar and iPads.
We could put the calendar on. I'm just kidding.
So I just want to think about those two things together. One of the arguments for iPads was that it can bring the classroom home and you're not dependent on being in the classroom with the teacher. Sometimes you can flip the classroom, you can, you get tutorials that you can do with your parents. So it's, there was really kind of a bold vision for changing pedagogy altogether and rethinking the way that school is done. And I'm wondering if giving, extending the iPad program so that the kids have them during the summer, if that is a way that you can address some of these issues by sort of electronically or technologically extending the school year?
I think it's certainly a possibility. If you think about the kids and my thoughts, and Chris, help me out here if I go down the wrong road. The kids who we see the lesser summer slide from are the kids who participate in summer programming. I think most notably of which is the summer reading program at our public libraries. Many kids who aren't able to participate in things like summer reading programs do not have six shelves of books at home like each of my three children do, and I'm sure many of yours and many folks here do. So I want to be real careful in the fact that the iPad, that kind of technology, what it can do is it can add access to information. It could add access to digital books that some families don't have access to now. It could add access to additional resources. So if we think of the summer slide of having access to some of those things, that kind of technology, I think, has the potential to address it. Simply by sending, and some people might say, well, if you send it home, they're going to play Clash of Clans all summer. That's the new popular game, according to my eight-year-old. And the fact is that there's some truth to that. But there's also, if you look at, there's game theory and all those. Think of some of the learning that happens on our baseball fields in the summer. Think of the learning that happens on the soccer fields and those kinds of pieces. And the kids who participate in those things are the kids who have less of a summer slide. Is that a fair statement, Chris?
In some areas.
In some cases, it's not a generalization. So would it have the possibility to address it? I think it would. That being said, I do think we have some students who, without intentional direct instruction, it's not going to pull that summer slide all the way. It's part of the prescription, it could be part of the prescription, but it certainly isn't the entire prescription for lots of kids because access without guidance is not the same as access with guidance. So does it expand the classroom walls? Absolutely. Is there the potential to do it? Without a doubt. But the question is, how far does that part alone go? Because as we've always said, the technology is great, but unless it's under the guidance of a professionally trained educator, it can make some difference, but it doesn't make nearly the difference that it does without having a trained educator to be part of it. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. And I think that's the key piece that I see, Rob, is the idea that, I think, again, what we've said is that a good teacher can use technology to make themselves even stronger and more capable. But if, but if we ever thought that technology would simply replace a quality teacher, you know, I don't think, I don't think any educator in this room would tell you that that's the case.
They've been trying since Edison and it hasn't.
So, you know, and, you know, and I've lived through it as long as anybody in terms of going back to when I remember it was, well, gee, we'll have public television and public television will replace, and it doesn't, obviously. I think that the key thing as we kind of think through this is taking a look at the fact that, I think, as we presented to you the calendar thoughts, it has been with the idea that with the modification of the calendar structure, we have the potential to basically reduce the number of days in the summer or reduce the overall slide that we're going to see. So although we're not necessarily increasing the total number of days, we are really changing that dynamic. And we're doing that really in a way that we were saying for all intents and purposes was cost neutral. In other words, going to a 45-15 or some other strategy like that, we could actually do that without necessarily any additional cost. We'd still be riding the buses the same number of days, we'd still be doing those pieces. To do as Carrie's kind of describing in terms of kind of blow it up and kind of think about it a different way for a part of the population.
No, for all of the elementary.
Except that part would stay in their current format and another part would go to this different piece. Now, now we have significantly increased costs for transportation. We've significantly increased costs for district-level special education programming. We've significantly increased costs in terms of even probably cleaning because now we're going to have those overlap situations where the year-round schoolers are going to be out at times when the regular students will be in. And so the time we depend on to actually get in and get the building cleaned, you know, becomes more interesting. However, I know that people are doing that, you know. They're doing it right now in Austin, Minnesota, you know, and they have a building that they've chosen. I think it's the whole building. I don't think it's just a section. I've been, I've had some experience working with some other districts that I wasn't necessarily in, but neighboring districts where they actually did a split schedule. And what they came back with was very immediate data that said, as kids move through the year, the kids who are going on the year-round schedule kept right on moving forward. And the kids that had the summer off were behind, and they started out behind. And they got farther and farther behind as they moved forward. So, you know, I think, I think part of the discussion for the board has got to be, if we're really looking at doing something very, very different, if it isn't just the calendar, then, then we have to understand that there's going to be a significant cost to doing that. And are we prepared to make that happen? What I'd also say, though, I think to the community in terms of thinking about the current situation is, I think people have said to us, well, why not just, you know, do more summer school or do more programming available for kids? That all costs money, too. And the issue is, it's going to have to reach out to a much more significant group of students than the number we have if we're really going to reduce the level of summer slide. So I think the calendar being a discussion over the last several years has really come back to the idea that significant calendar change could actually change that dynamic without significantly changing costs if it's done across the board. Doing anything else, there's going to be significant costs. And I think the board needs to think about, are we prepared to do that? And if we're prepared to stay with the traditional calendar, which again, I think the community that we've talked to and the community we've gotten straw poll data back from would say, stay with the current calendar, then we need to be prepared to think about, what are we going to do differently for many more kids than we currently have now to support the idea that instead of falling behind every year and then having to be brought back up, that we can keep kids moving forward? Because I want to see every child be able to continue to move forward. And although the research would say, kids who are in a higher socioeconomic status and have more options typically don't slide much in reading. Everybody slides in math. And I think what we will see is the more that the diversity of our community grows, the more that separation and that impact is going to show up. And so I think it is part of the discussion we need to have going forward. What I appreciate is what everybody has said so far about, you know, I think you've been looking at it from a lot of different angles, and I think that's good. What Mary and I and Matt and other folks need to have is some direction as to, at what point you're ready to try, are ready to consider doing something very different? And if you are, how, in what way are we going to try to take that forward? Or we need to be able to say to the community, Or we need to be able to say to the community, we're not ready to do that. And as much as I appreciate John's thoughts, the last thing I want to do is to have this be an election issue that would determine whether good people got elected or not based on their thoughts about one issue in terms of what's a much broader set of reasons that I hope people run for the school board.
All right. Well, I think we need to come to some sort of conclusion or some sort of decision or as to next.
Or maybe not. Or maybe we're not ready to do that yet.
Right. Or that can be a decision as well.
Yeah.
Noel?
Do we need to decide tonight?
No, I, I don't think we need to decide tonight. I do think that we, we need to decide something.
We need some direction.
We need some direction.
There's some direction.
Right. I mean, we, we could decide that we're going to postpone until the next meeting or we could, you know, but I think we need to, to, to not leave here without some sort of direction.
At the moment, I don't disagree with what I said. I might tomorrow, or I might find some concern about what somebody else has said, but if there's not an urgency to do it, I would say we can postpone the, the directive until the next meeting. Where are we at? Maybe value in being able to do that. Are we going to, are we going to hurt anything by doing that?
Julie?
Well, is, would the directive be, I understand how we went through this process. Would the directive be that we would proceed with a task force that would delve further and, and develop a calendar around some of the concepts? So is that really the question that we would want to resolve?
I don't know that we've established that, that that's the question that we're. I guess that's what my follow-up, Noel, is I think there isn't an urgency that we have to decide something tonight, but if we were postponing it to the, to the end of the month, I guess as a board, it would be helpful to know, what are we framing? Are we thinking about? Is that the question, what Julie just said, that we're needing to think more about if we're going to have a task force look at the calendars based on what we have had from the community conversations? Or is it thinking about what, what Carrie threw out about having a task force with some sort of broader imperative? Or there's the direction that we, if we are going to go with a traditional calendar, we could have a directive that the meet and confer go off and look at that. I mean, those are three things that have gotten brought up tonight as possible directions. Carrie?
Or you could have a, a directive to put together a task force that would look at all possible ways to reduce summer slide, not limited to the calendar. Because there, there probably are a lot of things that could be done, you know, different kinds of robust programs would be attractive and not mandatory, but attractive enough that kids would want to do it that might, might go a long way toward reducing summer slide.
That could be revenue.
Or at least revenue. I keep looking at Aaron, but you know, I mean, you, you, you know, there's, you know, I think that the, the reason we talked about the calendar was because we want to improve student learning and it's, you know, we look at all the different ways we can improve, improve student learning, so not to talk about the calendar, you know, seems kind of silly. But if the goal is improving student learning, there may be many things in addition to or aside from the calendar that, that could be focused on in a more deliberate way. And I, you know, I know that we are always looking at that, but if we, if the, if the directive was more focused on summer slide mitigation, that might, you know, create a different kind of direction than, than just improve student learning in a general way.
Anne?
I just feel like I have to say this because when I started on the school board, I got some advice from my friend Carrie over there about looking back to our, our mission statement, which is Northfield Public Schools is committed to delivering educational excellence and that empowers all learners to participate in our dynamic world. You know, what we have to think about is what's best for the kids' learning. And I, I really think the calendar is tied to that. The summer slide is a problem. And that even just tweaking a little bit, starting before Labor Day, having fewer, you know, not having this huge summer of some students having nothing to do and other students having all sorts of activities, I, I'm still really leaning towards, you know, having a, a really sharp focus on what we're trying to do. We're not trying to have, offer families plenty of time to go to their favorite cab, cabin or their resort. What we're trying to do is have our students be ready for the world. And this is why I really feel strongly about a balanced calendar. That's, that's what we're supposed to do. I'm sorry to say that. I feel very firmly about that.
Is there value in having a work session? That's what I'm kind of wondering if, if we're, if, Noel, you're thinking that we're, we're trying to put some urgency on something that doesn't, if we're, if we're not talking about the extra's calendar, which we never were, you know, maybe that's having, having time for us to sit around the table and do we think that, that we'd make more progress? Julie?
I would be extremely supportive of a work session.
Say again?
I would be very supportive of a work session and the opportunity to really just more fully dialogue. And I think that, you know, again, we've sort of come to this point and we don't really know where we are. I mean, we know where we've been and we've got data and, but where are we and what are we going to do with this data and how are we going to move forward with what we've heard and what we know? And what, you know, frame it around, you know, larger discussion. I would think that could be of great value.
Go ahead.
If, if we have a work session, I think typically, you know, we've had, you know, we've let administration know, here's the topic, here are the, the things we'd like you to be able to, to share with us. So I think that we need to kind of flesh that out if we are going to have a work session. So that would.
And, and again, though, maybe that isn't something you can give us.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Right now, but I mean.
But, but yeah, I think for us, for Matt and, and Mary and I and Billy Princoles and others, it's going to be really helpful if we have some sense of, here are the things you need to, to come prepared to help us think through. And, and here's, here's data if we need data, you know, if, if there's, you know, who's doing this or that particular option. And some way of at least trying to do some estimation in terms of kind of the, of the cost pieces. Because, you know, again, I've heard everything from kind of leave it alone to leave it alone or blow it up. I think that's where Rob might be. Uh, to, I really think we ought to, to blow it up, but we need some time to think about how to make that happen. Um, so I mean, we've, we've got folks that are coming from a variety of different positions on this. And I think that's been the way it's been the entire time we've had this, this discussion going forward.
Well, here's the, the question, I guess, I have for, for everyone else is, how far in advance would you want to make a change like this? If you were going to change the calendar, would you be willing to vote in August of this year to change the calendar for August or July of next year and say that the calendar starts in August or July of next year? Because we already have a calendar set through for 12 months or 13 months. And so are you realistically talking about having a calendar that starts before Labor Day that we're going to adopt at, at the earliest in August or September of this year? Or are we really talking about something that might happen further in the future? And if we are, does it make sense to adopt a, a more traditional calendar for 2014, 2015 and then talk about what it is we're going to do from 2015 and 2016 going forward?
Go ahead, Carrie.
You know, I think a radical change would need to be farther out than that. I mean, it would be the, the, let's see, we have 13, 14 set already. I think you, but you might do some tweaking for 14-15, so I wouldn't necessarily want to vote on 14-15. You know, now I think you'd do that vote in a more traditional timeframe. But if you were going to do a radical change, I think you'd need to be a couple of years out. Because the, the, the planning for a radical change is, is, you know, in addition to just a courtesy to families who are trying to handle events, I think we need a lot of lead time for our own staff to, to gear up for that kind of change. So, no, I'd say you plot it a couple of years in advance, but I wouldn't rush the, the decision on the exact dates of the traditional intervening calendar.
And I think we need to be really careful that, that when we go to this, we don't automatically frame a before Labor Day start, because that may not be the strategy.
Yeah.
I, I think we heard very clearly that August is problematic for people. And the one thing it does do is let you get the alignment of the, of the end of the semester. But in terms of other pieces, you could still reduce summer slide by increasing the, the time through June and July and still leave time off in August. So I, I, we just need to be, I, I think we need to be careful not to pigeonhole it as let's the before Labor Day start calendar or not, because that's not necessarily how it might end up playing out.
My imaginary dream calendar does start after Labor Day.
Yeah. Because the, the six weeks might be the last two weeks of July, be, you know, July 4th to, to the end of August. And, and everything else spreads out over, over time to get your 45-15 with about a six-week block in, in the summer. So I, 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 because I don't want people to hook onto that and say, well, you know, we're talking about a, it's, the only option is a before Labor Day start calendar, because it might not be.
Well, what I think we're getting near to doing is, what I would propose is maybe at the next meeting that we do have an item for discussion where we talk about what we would envision in a work session, start to think about what those ideas would be so that we could let administration know what sort of information we'd need. Start to look at your calendars because this is also where, you know, we think about, are we looking at using one of our summer dates that we don't have a meeting? Think about when, when you thought, thinking about that. So I think what, that's what I would like to propose is that we have, at our next May meeting, we discuss what our work session is going to be, what's the focus of it? Because I think, you know, we aren't quite cohesive there as to what that focus would be, what sort of information we would want it, be supported by that. And then take a look at your calendar because I think that it's going to be important to have all board members able to participate. And I know we're getting into a busy time, too. So.
Do we need a motion?
What, I, I think I'd feel more comfortable if it wasn't just me suggesting it, so. Move by.
Okay, well, what you're going to have to do is.
Have to tell me what the motion is.
You're going to, you're going to have to get a, a gen item onto the items for action. If you, if you wish to do that.
Julie, you have it.
Bob, did you move it?
Move what? Nobody was listening.
Aren't we just making a motion to move to items for action, a motion that would, what are we asking? That we would proceed with a work session?
So we're going to add an item to, to, to individual action?
Adding an item to individual action.
Yeah, go ahead, Carrie.
Does the board need to make a motion to add an item to the agenda?
No, I, I think all you need to do at this point is, is that.
If there's no objection, we can add one.
If we finish with discussion, then I think somebody, when we get to the items for individual action, somebody will make a motion that, that we do this other items for individual action in terms of what you want to do. Somebody seconds that and somebody, and then, then you approve it.
Yep, we can, if there's no objection when we, when we get to, we can add that.
I'm showing my research with Robert's remarks.
No, I, I think, I think you're fine, because you don't have to do anything in the discussion portion to get yourself there. It's just that, because any board member could, could bring an item for individual action as part of the, of that part of the, of the agenda.
All right.
As long as you kind of have thought about what it is you, what, what motion you want to make.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Well, I think we are ready to move on then to.
All right.
Lovely.